Thank you. All right, so I want to call this Bristol Town Council meeting to order of June 10th, 2020. I'm going to ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I know we can see the flag there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So, in the clunky form which is online meetings, these things shall happen. If my colleagues or anyone from the town has an issue, just raise your hand if you would, if you can't do, not digitally but actually physically, so I know that there's a concern, an issue, you want to speak, such and so forth, just in case there's a problem, I want to make sure that everyone is heard. So, let's get going with this meeting. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the Consent Agenda.
Chairman, this is Tim. A motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So, Tim made the motion, Tony made the second. Before I call for that vote, I neglected to ask Chris Vitale to take a moment. Actually, you know what, Chris, we'll hold off on that. I was going to ask Chris to speak to raising hands, such and so forth, but when we get closer to that section, I will have that pointed out. So, we had a motion by Tim, seconded by Tony, for the Consent Agenda, and I'm going to do a roll call vote. Mary?
Yeah.
Tim?
Yeah.
So, I'm looking for a yea, nay, because I can, the clerk took attendance with everybody, so I apologize. So, I'm looking for your votes on the Consent Agenda.
Oh, yea, yea.
Okay, Tim? Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is the Submission of Minutes of Previous Meetings, Item A1.
Chairman, a motion to approve the previous minutes.
Is there a second?
Mary, yes, second.
Tim made the motion, Mary made the second. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is, this is the Second Reading for Adoption of Ordinance 2020-02. This is to establish a 20 mile an hour, excuse me, a 20 mile per hour speed limit on Perry Street.
So, if you could, Chief, could you speak, and I believe it would be the chief, be most appropriate to respond to this, just if you could remind this council and the public, why are we talking about this right now? What's the change? And, Mr. Clerk, feel free to also explain if you believe it's most appropriate.
It was my understanding that the town's going to be doing some work on the roadway in that particular area. We spoke with the engineering firm, members of the department did. There are currently speed limit signs that say 15 miles an hour. Unfortunately, those were never memorialized with the council or received council approval, so they're only there with no enforcement ability. The prima facie speed by Rhode Island General Law in residential areas is 25 miles an hour. We've had numerous neighbors that have called in, certainly with the bridge detour and the traffic coming up Perry Street, realizing that that will go away. But what we're trying to do is to have good speed limit signs that have the full faith of the council, along with some calming signs as they come up just before the curve, and we're looking to have proper signage and a proper speed limit for that particular roadway. And I will say that it feeds off of an elementary school in that particular area, so that is the reason why we're seeking to reduce it from 25 to 20, below the prima facie speed limit for residential neighborhood.
Thank you, Chief. What's this council's pleasure?
This is Tony. It's an arraignment of the chief and all others. I move forward and move to approve.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tim. There's a motion made by Tony to approve, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is Item C2, and this is the Second Reading for Adoption of Ordinance 2020-03. And the council will recall that there was some discussion about the parking adjacent to the elder care parking lot, and that the recommendation of the Director of Public Works and the Police Department was to extend this particular existing no parking space to make it a little bit longer, and that's what this ordinance does.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. What's this council's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, this is Tim. I'll make a motion to approve the second reading to grant this zoning change to incorporate the recommendations and conditions from the planning board.
Second, this is Mary.
So, there's a motion and a second to grant this parking prohibited at all times to extend the existing no parking area on Franklin Street. It was seconded, sorry, it was made by Mary, seconded by Tim. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is Item E1, and the council will recall that there was a six-month review instituted for the Mount Hope Liquor Store Class A intoxicating beverage license at the time of renewal. Now you have, it is now before you for the six-month review, and you have recommendations from the Town Administrator Fire Chief and a late item recommendation from the Chief of Police to extend the license for a full term.
Excellent. What's this council's pleasure?
This is Tony. Based on the recommended and the positive recommendations, I motion to move forward.
This is Tim. I'll second the motion.
There's a motion made by Tony to approve a full year's license, seconded by Tim. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Similarly, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, Item E2 is for the Sunday Sales License for the same licensee with the same recommendations.
Counsel?
This is Tim. I make a motion to approve.
Tony, second.
Motion made by Tim to approve, seconded by Tony. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is the Annual Laundry License Renewals. You have recommendation provided by the Town Administrator and the Chemist Pretreatment Coordinator.
Chairman, this is Tim. I make a motion to grant the renewals for 20 to 2021 as stated.
Second, this is Mary.
There was a motion made by Tim to grant those licenses. It was seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
And finally, in this section, Item E4, and you, this is the Dancing and Entertainment License Renewals for 2020-21, and you have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator Fire Chief and late item recommendation provided by the Police Department for renewal.
Chairman, this is Tim. Based on the positive recommendations, I make a motion to grant the Dancing and Entertainment Renewals for 2020 to 2021.
Tony, second.
Motion made by Tim to grant the licenses, seconded by Tony. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is Item F1. This is the Petition of Kealan Felipe, 133 Gibson Road, petitioning the council to raise Black Lives Matter flag at Town Hall.
Is Kealan here? And Chris, I'm, Chris Vitale, I'm going to ask that you assist me with that.
Is she there?
Are you there, Chris?
I am. I'm just taking a look here. I have two hands raised inside the attendee screen, and I'm just taking a look for the petitioner.
Okay.
I think it's the first person is on there. Is it Roberto? What's the same last name, though?
All right.
Maybe.
Hi, yes, this is Kealan.
Hi, Kealan.
Hi.
So, you have a petition in front of this council to raise the Black Lives Matters flag. Could you take a moment? Obviously, we've read your petition, but could you take a moment to summarize your request?
Sure. I have, my husband is with me here, Roberto Felipe, so we have just prepared a little statement to share. So, we are residents of Bristol. We have two children that are both part of the Bristol Warren School District, and as you know, currently in our current events, we are seeing the racist structures that pervade our country continue. And myself, as a white woman and ally, I believe it takes the voices and actions of our white citizens to make change. So, we've seen lots of companies, organizations, and towns immediately come out and denounce racism, but we've yet to hear anything from the town of Bristol. And by staying silent on these current events, our town can be seen as complicit in the continuation of the systemic racism that has pervaded our country for too long. Our town unfortunately has a storied history with racism because of the way it was founded as a slave trade. And so, I'm wondering what we've done as a town to denounce this history and to stand with our black citizens. So, in recent days, we've seen the actions that are moving across our country that are leading towards healing and growth. And this includes seeing Black Lives Matter flags being flown at the State House in Providence, at the Providence Police Department Headquarters, and even in other small towns with similar white majority residents, like Burlington, Vermont. These small gestures show black Americans that we see them, we hear their cry for change, and we're willing to listen and grow. So, I'm here today with my husband, Roberto, who's going to speak in a moment, to ask the town to raise a Black Lives Matter flag either at Town Hall or Independence Park. Roberto, do you want to share?
Good evening, Town Council. For the benefit of those that are on the call but only have audio available, my name is Roberto Felipe. I'm a black resident of Bristol. I wanted to first off thank the council for agreeing to put this topic on the agenda and then also making it available for residents and also Kealan and myself and other participants to voice an opinion to be heard. A little story about myself and my family, we came here four years ago from Chicago, my wife, two children, and I, in the hopes of giving my children, our children, an upbringing in a community that could be familial, nurturing, and allow them to thrive through exploration and gaining confidence in who they are and who they one day hope to be. Bristol has absolutely done that for them. We couldn't be any more happy with the people that they are becoming, in their community and sports and at school. I, in my experience, has been a little bit different, and that's what I wanted to speak on today, is that I haven't necessarily had anything egregious happen, but it's in the small, the small sort of instances day to day that I haven't necessarily felt the most welcome, the most accepted in the community. In just the small little glances that I've seen or witnessed as I've walked in stores, whether it be the Stop and Shop or the Ace or the Ocean State Job Lots, the glances on a day to day basis can become a little bit overwhelming. But more than what I experienced, putting a Black Lives Matter flag up would be transformationally affirming to the children of color that reside in town as well as visit our town. There's an analogy called a photograph analogy, and then I hope that I don't butcher it too much, but if we, everyone here at the Town Council and COVID wasn't here and we were actually meeting in person and we would have a picture taken of us to commemorate the meeting, the first thing that would be done, if we can go ahead and suspend technology, but if we were to actually have a physical photograph in our hands, the first thing that everyone of the group would do in receiving that photograph of the evening would be to look for yourself in that picture. That small little moment is underlying the importance of what it's like to actually look or see yourself and the matter of being able to sort of find ourselves, whether it be at school or in our community, it's important to find ourselves in our environment. Same goes for children at Colt Andrews and at Roger Williams, or the visitors that come through for the Fourth of July Parade or to any of the restaurants in downtown. If I can ask anything of you on the council that are listening to this petition, is to go ahead and separate what the Black Lives Matter movement has sort of had to defend itself from over the past several years, and actually just listen to the words of the Black Lives Matter and the fact that what it's asking for is acknowledgement and pleading for the recognition and the importance that a person's life, whether it be an adult or a child, is important. This flag is not anti-police. I wanted to really stress that. I have had amazing interactions from the police officer in front of my child's school on the daily basis of where we catch up on the week's news, the weekend's news, to my neighbor who is across the street and my children jump at the chance of greeting every chance that they get. Bristol stands out as a shining star of what community policing is. So, I want, I mean, no disrespect by asking for this flag to come up. I would just hope that we take this opportunity to stand as a model for other communities on how to be inclusive and embrace all members of this community. I'd be doing it a service if I didn't speak on the weight of the last several weeks and how damaging it's been. There's a real sense of isolation when you read the news and when you have lines of communication speaking more personally to just me and my network of friends and acquaintances, when there's the line of communication that goes quiet inopportune, right, when this, to coincide with what's happened recently out of Minnesota, it's isolating. But on the other side, I can also speak to how affirming and how restorative the acknowledgement from my friends and acquaintances can be during that time, and that what I ask for everyone on the council as representatives with the responsibility of leading your community is to acknowledge and uplift a segment of your village that may feel that same sense of isolation. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto. Thank you, Kealan. I am going to ask for some feedback from the council just in a moment, but I had actually a question for you. You made a particular point that I was actually going to bring up, I'm so glad that you did. You said that Black Lives Matter is not against police. My question would be, if you don't mind, and I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, if you will, but simply is how, if one were to support putting up the flag, how do you differentiate between some of the things that Black Lives Matter supports that a council person may not support? And I'm speaking about me personally, is that you mentioned about, one of the primary things on the carousel on a Black Lives Matter website is to defund the Police Department, and I vehemently disagree with that. So, help me and help my colleagues support putting up the flag while coming to terms with a part of Black Lives Matter that seems to be forefront and prevalent.
Okay. Am I still unmuted?
You are not unmuted.
I believe with that and the defunding of the police force, I think that the conversation is the most positive part of what's going on over the last couple of weeks, right? And the fact that we're no longer afraid of having this conversation and sort of moving, not necessarily being at the destination simply by checking boxes on what that carousel may have read on the Black Lives Matter website, I don't believe that it's a straight, black and white, pardon the expression.
I understand. I've done it too, so, and I'm going to actually stop you just for a moment, and I'd like to say this to everyone, if someone missteps, if someone says something by mistake, there is no one here that is calling anyone out. I will not allow it, and my colleagues would never allow it either. So, something like you just said is an exact example of normal conversation that happens, and nothing should be read into that. I certainly didn't, and I know my colleagues didn't either. Please continue.
Okay, thank you. So, personally speaking, I think that it's more than just defunding. It's not defunding, it's a change in the way that police forces are educated to go ahead and interact inside communities. It's a way of going through several more barriers to go ahead and make sure that any potential candidates are a good fit and can handle decision-making under pressure.
And to add in, I think we are so lucky to live in Bristol. Like Roberto said, we have been nothing but just amazed by the community placing here, and there's, you know, no call to defund the police here. However, there are systems in this country that are set up that are keeping black people from realizing true justice. And while the, right now, the hot topic on Black Lives Matter is, you do see "defund the police," it is about schools, it's about curriculums, it's about housing insecurities, it's about equity and getting jobs. They're fighting for justice for black people across all those things. And what, the most important thing is that they're saying "black lives matter," that for 400 years in our country, we have not taken that stance. We say "all lives matter," but all lives can't matter until black lives matter. So, it's breaking down the systems, the historic systems that started right here in Bristol, where people were brought to this country without wanting to be coming here, right, and they're used for capital gain. That is really what it's about, and making sure that we are recognizing what the systems are in our country that may not be fair for everyone and that we will stand with each other, no matter the color of your skin, but most especially if you're black, to make sure that those systems work for you right now.
Thank you. So, before I ask my colleagues for their input and a motion that we can discuss, a couple of things as a process end of things is that we do not have, currently, we do not have a policy for flag raising. We have precedent for flag raising. So, example is the Portuguese flag was just recently raised, which is a sovereign nation, right? And other sovereign nations, the Armenian flag is petitioned and raised every year. I know I'm leaving out a few, and that's not done purposely, I'm just giving a couple of examples. We do have that, but we don't have a policy on yes and no. What I would say is that this request is, it would seem like if this council decided it wanted to take the next step and do that, part of the protocol is we raise those flags for a full day. So, said another way, starting on, say, 7:00 a.m., a Town Hall employee comes in, raises that flag, and that flag would stay up for that full 24 hours, and we've done that, and that's been our protocol for multiple years. I'm going to ask the solicitor to weigh in on that in just a moment. But I also believe that in no way, shape, or form I'm suggesting this evening, that this council needs to consider a policy on that, and we don't need to get into the particulars or any of it this evening, but I would ask that whatever motion is put forth, that it includes a discussion about or in a future meeting about a policy for this, so we can be clear and fair and even-handed. Again, not this evening, it's inappropriate, we don't change rules midway through the game and midway through the process, probably a better way to say that. But I would ask that, obviously, if this would be approved, then we would need a flag, a three-by-five flag would be, I believe, is the generally accepted sizing on it, dropped off, I would suppose, to the clerk's office. Again, if this council saw fit, that that's what they wanted to do as a next step. And, Mr. Solicitor, could you speak to that point that I just brought up in regards to the time it should be flown? I'm not talking about the day, but just how long it should be up.
As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the council, and actually the town, has a longstanding tradition and sort of policy about when an organization, group, country comes to you and asks that, for their specific reason, the flag be raised in honor of their cause, it has been for a 24-hour policy. My recommendation is that since that's the way you've treated each and every other group that has come before you prior to this evening, that you keep it that way for now, and as you suggest, in the future, if the council would like to come up with a policy that addresses these types of issues and looks at everything holistically, including the amount of time, that makes sense. I agree with you, you should not be doing that in the middle of a discussion tonight, but I do think you should be consistent and extend the same type of recognition that you've extended to these other groups that have previously come to you over many, many years.
Thank you. So, my colleagues, I'd like to open up to you. You're able to unmute yourself, as you know. I open up to you, and I would ask that maybe we could have a motion that we can work with and then have a discussion more pointed that way, but certainly I leave it up to all of you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Tim. I think last week was an incredible, difficult period for individuals across the globe. The ongoing pandemic and with the civic unrest spurred by ongoing racial injustice has created the pivotal time and a moment in our history. I'm in support of flying the Black Lives Matter flag, and I'd like to maybe look at our policy, because I'd like to fly it for the full month of June. It sends a really strong message that Bristol is a compassionate community. It also calls and reminds us to stand up for liberty and justice. And what's more patriotic, our town is so patriotic, this says, "We validate those African-Americans, and we want them here in our town, they are welcome," and I think it just sends a strong message. Thank you.
So, is, should I take that as a motion, Tim? Or tell me how I should, how would you like me to move forward with that?
That is a motion to fly Black Lives Matter flag.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, this is Aaron Lay. I'll second that. And was the motion to fly the flag over a period or for the rest of the month, is that the motion?
I defer to Vice Chairman. I don't know. What was, was that your motion?
That was my motion.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, so I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make some points, and first and foremost, one of the points I want to make is I did want to thank the petitioners for bringing this before us. I know how difficult it can be to bring these types of conversations and discussions about race before us, so thank you for that. Second, I want to say that I came here today, and indeed, for the last couple of weeks, I've been doing this, and I came here today to listen and to use my position of influence to ensure that those who, whose voices, who've historically been stifled, that they'll have a safe space where they can share their experiences with us as Roberto and Kealan did. I've listened pretty well, but that doesn't mean that I'll be silent, because these last two weeks, I've heard enough stories to say enough. And we've had enough, and I think that people who are experiencing this are absolutely exhausted. And when they turn to the national government for leadership on these issues, they've gotten absolutely none. And so, it's no wonder to me that we have people like Kealan and Roberto who are turning to the town because they have nowhere else to turn. And so, really, my last point is that now is really our critical time to act, and we have an opportunity here to send a very powerful signal to affirm what should have been obvious to us 400 years ago, and that's that Black Lives Matter, and that justice in our nation should be administered equally and without regard to skin color. And that is why I support this position and why I ask my colleagues to vote with me to make this powerful affirmation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary? We can't hear you yet.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Yes, I really appreciate the comments of Kealan and Roberto. I think all of us, you know, living in Bristol, no matter where we live, just as human beings... I think all of us, you know, living in Bristol, no matter where we live, just as human beings, believe that everyone is equal and should be viewed that way. And it's unfortunate that that sometimes people don't feel that way or that that doesn't come through. And so I do say that I do agree that this is a gesture to make people feel welcome to be acknowledge the town's willingness to listen and to participate, to have, to be a compassionate community and to continue with what we hope is fair and equitable justice and throughout our community. So I don't have an issue, you know, voting to fly the flag. I do appreciate very much the comments or the maybe differentiation between the flag itself and the Black Lives Matter movement in that we are not necessarily signing on to that entire agenda, if you will, but to the fairness and the equitable treatment of all of our citizens, which I know that myself and my colleagues all agree with. I would like to just pick up on one quick thing, if you don't mind, that Kealan said mentioned. And that is, you know, this may be a very powerful gesture to many people, but it goes really way beyond this. And we all know that we've gotten many emails and many people have contacted us about voting for this. I really wanna make sure that it's not just that we do this and people think that they have accomplished something, because it's really much more than that. It is, as you mentioned, how people are treated by their landlord, by their landlords, by their neighbors, by the shop clerks, by the restaurateurs, by everybody that they come in contact with. That's really, and the police and all the government officials, that's really the key. And I think that also, and I also, maybe because this is where I spend a lot of my time is in the education community, that people really need to make and impact individual lives the best that they can as well. And I look at some of the people who are on this, at this meeting tonight. I know many of them are retired or in some are retired teachers. And I would urge people to take an issue and spend some time, like we know that the kids in our urban communities who are kids of color and immigrant kids and mostly living in poverty, where their parents are the essential workers throughout the COVID-19, that maybe they take on and figure out a way to donate some of their time to tutor those kids. The digital divide is real and that is something that, you know, many of the kids in the Providence Pataque Central Falls, when Socket, they've really fallen behind. And those are things, are very concrete things that we can do to make sure kids are going to have equitable education and that they're going to be able to continue and stay in school and not fall too far behind. So I just, I think that there's a lot to this. I think this is one small step, but it certainly is not these, all the steps that need to be taken. And I've just urged people to get involved with many of the other things, as I think Kealan mentioned, schools and community and housing. And that's really where we're going to make social change and really hopefully eventually get to true social justice.
Thank you. Tony?
Can you hear me now?
We can, you're, it's a little bit scratchy.
Okay, let me try that again.
Oh, that's a little better now.
Okay. Certainly, I certainly like to thank all the folks that have contacted me and express their concerns about what has happened throughout the country and specifically, well, not necessarily in Bristol, I'm glad that has not happened. I was dean of students for six years at the high school and I dealt with many African American students. And one of the things that was very consistent was being consistent and fair regardless of who. It was not looking at color. So I lived through that for six years, formerly as a town administrator and also now as a town counselor. We are actually were very fortunate to hire eight police officers in George, which was an African American officer. Unfortunately, he was lost, I mean, he was involved in incident while on vacation with the family and we've lost him, which is greatly missed by us. He was quite an officer and quite a gentleman anytime I came in contact with him. So I, from my experience, you know, the folks that dealt with, you know, I, they felt very welcome. I felt very, very welcome around them as well. So, you know, I take some issue that, you know, people look a little different, but then everybody has their own perception of what life is all about. As for the raise of the flag, I know it was stated, you know, for the remainder of the month, we don't have a policy and obviously we cannot change the rules in the midstream. Although I would favor one day, if we do it at the town hall, if we do an independence talk, I don't have a problem to do it for the remainder of the month.
Thank you. So on a, just on a moment on that, I should say that this petition was specifically to raise a flag at town hall. That's the way it was advertised, though that's the way it was petitioned. So that's the only thing, in my opinion, that we should consider this evening and nothing else. And no disrespect to your comments, Tony, whatsoever, just that that's not how it was advertised and requested. This is not a public hearing, so there is no requirement to hear from the public. If you've watched the council meeting, you know that does not stop this council from listening to the public. We truly believe that hearing from the public is our job. Now, I am gonna open this up to the public for public comment. I'm gonna give you a couple of quick things and I'm actually gonna ask first that Chris Vitale, and I know he's on the meeting, I'm gonna ask him to just take a moment to explain everyone how to raise their hand and how that process works. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if you are calling in under the Zoom app, I know that we have currently eight attendees who have their hands raised. And I know that the chairman will recognize each attendee individually and then will unmute you. If you're using the Zoom app, you can find the raise hand button under your video screen. So if you're using a computer or a tablet, it should be right at that bottom bar. If you are calling in and you want to provide a comment, you can use the raise hand feature by pressing star nine. Star nine will be able to do that for you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. So a couple of quick guidelines. Number one, it is important that you're brief. Brief means two minutes approximately. There is no timer, but I ask that you be brief. Second thing is that I ask that it is not repetitive. So if something has been covered and you agree with it, it's okay. Just say that you agree or so say I, if you will. But we do not need to repeat what's already been covered. Third, and I would say not last, and this is no order of importance, is that this will be done respectfully. And there is zero tolerance for anything but respect. I have no doubt in my mind that if residents of Bristol, I know a lot of them, so do my colleagues, and I have no doubt that this will be handled respectfully. If it is not, you will be muted immediately and we will move forward from there. I will not allow anything but discord is absolutely fine. Disrespect is absolutely not tolerated. So if I wasn't clear in there, so about two minutes, I, no more than that, please. There's a few people that have their hands raised. Once we hear from the public, this is not a public hearing, so it is, we're not gonna, I don't want this to take quite a long time, but I do think it's extremely important that we hear from the public. So I am gonna start from the top of the list and how this will work, please, is the top of the list is, and Chris, hold on, demuting, would be the 9747, sorry, I'm doing that incorrectly, the 97471748547, boy, I did that poorly, you know who you are. What I need you to do, please, is state your name and address for the record. And again, I ask that you be, actually, I know a CEO that likes to say, be brief, be brilliant and be done. So that's a perfect way to look at this. We're interested to hear from everyone. So let's start, Chris, go ahead. And I'm gonna actually ask that participant to unmute, which was the caller with the 974 starting off 717. And I've asked you to unmute. I don't see you there, so we can come back to you. So I'm gonna go to, the name on my screen is Kevin Barber. And you should be, I just asked you to unmute, I believe. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
I can. So what I need you to do, please, is state your name and address for the record.
All right, well, first off, my name is Kevin Barber. I'm actually from Warren, Rhode Island, but my second home is in Bristol. I've grown up in Bristol, I've had friends all over Bristol, I went to high school in Bristol and I consider Bristol my second home. So first off, I wanna send my sincerest apologies and all my prayers to anybody that's ever dealt with feeling different due to the ignorance of racism, as well as those who may have lost a loved one from racism. I'm here simply to voice my support for anybody that has dealt with this or dealt with feeling different because of the color of their skin. I am a white male standing up and saying for everybody as a human, the color of our skin should not matter. What matters is what we're all here doing with the time that we are here on this earth together. We are all human. We are not functioning by the color of our skin. We are functioning what's inside our mind, inside of our heart, inside of our soul. These are the things that we should be warned about. If Black Lives is a movement of unity and love and is looking to build in that support and love of all humanity, then I'm all for it.
Thank you very much. Well done. I'm gonna go next to Nick and I'm gonna say your last name poorly and I apologize. Nick, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I support a number of--
Nick, could you please, I'm sorry to interrupt you, could you please state your full name and address for the record?
Sorry, Nick Pinello, 76 Kingswood Road in Bristol.
Boy, I could do Pinello easily. I don't know why I had a problem with that. Sorry about that, Nick.
No, I agree with a number of the policies under the Black Lives Matter movement. I just, I don't feel that it's appropriate for the town to raise flags for different movements. There ever, all of us have our own agendas and our own movements that we'd like to have promoted. And I just don't feel that it's, it's appropriate for the town to, to pick and choose which movements to support. So and that's, that's pretty much my, my stance. I know I have a movement that I'm particularly fond of and, and, you know, eventually I may end up making a petition to the town as well, but I just don't think, feel it's appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. I'm gonna go to Madeline Lessing. And Madeline, if you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my full name is Madeline Azie Lessing and I'm a resident at 40 Diamond Ave in Bristol. Thank you for your time. I'm speaking today in favor of flying a Black Lives Matter flag in the town of Bristol. As someone who grew up in Bristol and went to Bristol Warren Public Schools, I think flying the flag is the very least we could do to begin healing and acknowledging our town's wide history of anti-blackness. And, and when I say that, I mean systemically, I don't necessarily mean blatantly. Our schools and parks are named in honor of people who opposed the abolition of slavery or owned enslaved people themselves. Our town's pride and joy is Independence Day, about which Frederick Douglass, abolitionist and former enslaved person said, "I'm not included within the pale of this glorious anniversary. Your high independence only reveals the immeasurable distance between us." Because at the time that our country got independence, many people who were enslaved were still not free. The patriotism we celebrate here in Bristol, though I'm grateful to grow up among this community and to have the community of the Fourth of July, the patriotism we celebrate here and that I was taught about in my history classes is a limited perspective. It's one of often white superiority and the omission of black narratives. The North often says that it's, or wants to act as though it is a better racial justice despite how we pride ourselves on being so. We're not any better in the South. Slavery is a huge legacy in both our state and our town. So regardless, we have an opportunity and a responsibility to get better and to have more pride in our town for doing the right thing. And I think that really starts with this flag and the declaration that Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Adam Ramos. Adam, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. My name is Adam Ramos. I live at 116 Bayview Avenue in Bristol. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am going to be very brief and hopefully brilliant and then done. The, I'm in support of the motion to fly, in the petition, to fly the flag for the remainder of the month. I believe that as has been identified, it's important that we as a town speak in a unified voice to stand for the values that the Black Lives Matter flag represents. And that is that there, until we recognize the need to rectify the centuries of mistreatment of people with black skin, we are not truly living in a world where there is equal justice. And we need to take these steps showing our solidarity with the people who need to be recognized and brought to a stronger and more equitable place, in fact, a fully equitable place as citizens of this country. And I want to highlight some of the comments that Councilwoman Perella made about this being really the tip of the iceberg and that we all need to recognize, not only that we as individuals, but we as a town government, need to take a hard look at ways in which we can change the structures that exist in our society in order to eliminate the social inequity that has persisted and pervades the way in which the black community has been treated in order to allow for us to live up to the ideals that we have espoused as a country and have celebrated for hundreds of years in this patriotic town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm, is Rob Hancock. Rob, if you could, please state your name and address for the record. One second. I think that works now. Go ahead, Rob.
Yes, my name is Rob Hancock. I am at 11 Juniper Court and speaking on behalf of myself, my wife Gwen and my two kids. I wanna thank you, Mr. Chairman, for facilitating this conversation, considering this petition and for giving folks the opportunity to talk. I want to voice my support for flying the Black Lives Matter flag at our town hall. And I wanna thank the petitioners for coming forward. To second what Mr. Ramos said, I also agree with Councilwoman Perella, this is the first step. And, but it's a critical and important step to begin with an affirmation that black lives matter in our community. Every community has to determine how they live out that truth and how they live up to that statement. In some communities, that does mean a transformation of how the police interacts with the community. Because many people have mentioned, that's not where the work is here in Bristol. And so I appreciate your question, Mr. Chairman, about defunding the police. And that's not a scenario that Bristol needs to explore. But there are many other ways with education and housing, with understanding our history and the statements that we make with it, that we can affirm that black lives matter in our town. We can send a clear and compelling statement to our black residents here and to those who might look to join us in Bristol, that you are valued, you are important, you are loved and we welcome you here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next, we have Benedict Lessing. I'm going to unmute you. If you would, please state your full name and address for the record. I'm gonna ask you to unmute, we can't hear you yet. I'm gonna give you an extra moment here.
Okay.
There you are. Go ahead. So if you could, please state your full name and address for the record.
I'm using my husband's laptop. This is Lynette Azie Lessing from 40 Diamond Avenue. My husband and I have, and, and my husband and I have lived in Bristol for 35 years. My husband and I have, and my husband and I have lived in Bristol for 35 years. We've raised our kids here. They've gone to Bristol Warren schools. I should note that when my kids were in the schools here, they witnessed many incidents of racism toward kids of color in the school system, and I'm proud to say intervened in those situations very often. But I think we have to face facts that racism does exist in our beautiful little town. And it breaks my heart that the Felipes have to make the case for the town to affirm that their lives matter as much as white people's lives. And I think just the fact that we need a campaign that says Black Lives Matters, Black Lives Matter, tells us everything we deem to know about ourselves as a country and what we need to be doing and where we need to be going. Of course, I'm in favor of flying the flag. And I would appeal to you to recognize the historic importance of these times, to recognize Bristol's horrific past in importing slaves and so much of the wealth and beautiful buildings in the town being built on slave trade money, and to understand that black people have been waiting 400 years for us to fully recognize that their lives matter too. And so I would strongly encourage you to take advantage of this opportune time and fly that flag at least throughout the month of June. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Jane Lavender. And before I go to Jane, I just want to say thank you to all so far. This is exactly what we were looking for. It is brief, it's concise, and it's respectful. I had, this doesn't surprise me, but it's also outstanding to see it go this way. And this council and the town thanks you. And the clerk is sitting right next to me. Typically, he's in our conference room, so we don't have feedback with our computers, but his computer is on the fritz. So the clerk, Lou Sharillo, is sitting right next to me. He is part of the meeting and taking minutes. He asked to make sure that I had that in for the record. So I am going to Jane Lavender. Jane, I am going to ask you to unmute, and if you could please state your full name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jane Lavender, and I live at 50 Thame Street in Bristol. And I did email all of you with my opinion. I think Bristol has a wonderful opportunity right now to not stay silent on racism. We hear the cry for change all over our country. It's important that we fly that flag. I definitely would like to see it fly for the month. Many people say, well, our lives matter, and that's very true. But it redirects the attention and focus away from those who need it right now. Not everyone's life is in danger due to their skin colors. And I think it's extremely important that we make a stand on this. And I really appreciated the great dialogue that has been going on tonight and the support of this. So thank you very much for having this meeting. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jane. Next is Lisa Peterson. So I'm going to unmute you. If you could please state your name, full name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Lisa Peterson. My address is 19 Jennifer Drive in Bristol. Some of you are expecting a huge, long, historical, and evidentiary-based anti-racist rant. I'm not going to deliver that today because so many people have made the most important points from that history. But I do want to simplify it and say that if someone in our town, someone that we care about, says, "This is hurting me, and this is something you can do about it, and that action is going to harm me none," I think it's unconscionable to not take that basic step to make sure that every one of us feels welcome in the Bristol community. That's all I have to say except for thank you to the petitioners for putting yourselves out there and sharing your experiences.
Thank you. Next is Mike. I only have a first name. I've unmuted you. Mike, if you could please state your full name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Burns. I live at 244 Medicom Avenue in Bristol.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm opposed to raising the flag because I think it's a very slippery slope to raise flags for political movements. I think it becomes very divisive. It is an action, it is a feel-good action. While there are many concrete actions that we ought to be taking to help all our brothers and sisters, this is not one of them. Mary Porella mentioned that you can separate the flag from the movement. I don't believe that's true. You cannot separate the flag from the movement. And the movement has some policies, I think, that most Bristolians would be very opposed to. Defunding the police has been mentioned. But somebody at the beginning tried to talk through that, but it's very clear from going to the website that that's a major program of Black Lives Matter. And if that's the message we want to send to our police department, to the men and women of our force who serve us so well, I think that's a significant mistake. We need to begin healing. Although Frederick Douglass moved quite a bit from the initial quote that was given tonight and went a lot further, closer to Lincoln's position on issues. You know, I think if we're worried about blacks' lives, we shouldn't be worried, really, about the 7,407 blacks who are killed every year, and the majority are killed by, now, I understand it's not politically correct to talk about black-on-black violence, but it is a fact of life, and it affects many communities significantly. Chicago lost 31 people on May 31st, or 18, I'm sorry. None were killed by a policeman. Any protest to that? And then I would talk a little bit about education, which is the second part of this. If we're really serious about black lives, we need to do something about education. We need to think more about charter schools. We need to think more about vouchers. Instead of doing a feel-good action, which is going to actually offend many people in Bristol, let's do something concrete. Let's really help people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jesse Ramos. I'm going to unmute you or give the possibility of unmuting. If you could please state your full name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jesse Ramos. I'm at 520 Peachy Drive in Bristol currently. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
First, yeah, just thank you so much for listening to me, and thank you to everybody else who's shared thus far and shared some really great opinions. I'm a lifelong Bristol resident. My family's been here for over 100 years, and I went to the, all the public schools here. I also went to Roger Williams, and I'm currently getting my master's at Rick. Yeah, I think a lot of the statements I've said, that I've written up, have also been echoed. I just think this would be a huge step, to start, I am in support of flying the flag. I think it's a huge step in advocating for inclusiveness in this town. It's just a small sign of solidarity that's incredibly important. And to respectfully disagree, because I do hear the other points of Nick and Mike, I think this is bigger than just a cause. I don't think it's really a political movement. I think the slogan Black Lives Matter is not trying to elevate black folks by any reason. It's more so just simply a plea to be treated fairly and justly. We may be a small town, but I think we could have a huge impact in this situation, perhaps even inspiring other towns in East Bay and further. And just to go off the comments and disagreements, it may seem like a feel-good thing, but I think it's also a catalyst for change for these things that people are advocating for, like education and equal housing and employment and healthcare opportunities. I think something as small as this is a catalyst for bigger change and more conversation, as you've seen on the national platform. From the protests happening, big and small, it has everyone talking, and it has a lot of change going on around the country. I just think it's, we have a chance to do something really beautiful here. And I think if it does offend people and it does create divisiveness, I think those people need to respectfully have, maybe change their, maybe an opening of their minds and perspectives into seeing that, does their upset feelings with the flag compare to the feelings that black folks have in communities around the country, and which is more important to them at this time? Thank you so much for listening, and thank you, everyone, for sharing.
Thank you. Next is Jamie Brooks. I would ask you to state your full name and your address for the record.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Jamie Brooks. I live at 418 Medicom Ave. in Bristol. And I first want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know you don't have to, and so I'm appreciative of that. I also want to thank Councilman Lay, who took the time to reach out, from an email that was sent, sharing my favoritism for this petition and for listening. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but after listening to lots of the discussion, I am compelled to speak. So I am a white mother who was born and raised in Warren in Bristol. My maiden name is Souza, which runs deep roots in the Portuguese community here in Bristol. And after returning to the community about nine years ago, I chose to live in Bristol because of the many wonderful things that Bristol has to offer. But I have three black children. I have twin boys who are 17 and a 21-year-old daughter. And I come before you to support this petition because racism is alive in Bristol. And as much as I'd like to think that it's not, and I like to think that when I made the decision to have biracial children 21 years ago, that times will have changed by now, they haven't. I ask for you to not only fly this flag for a day, but for the month of June. Because this isn't a political movement, it's a lifetime movement. It's not a holiday or a celebration or a recognition. It's a way for us to tell people that live in this town, that are black, that we respect you, we hear you, and we want to make change. I'll share three brief stories with you that I hope will help you understand why the flag is the first of what I hope will be many steps to eliminate racism in this town. And if any of you are on the Around Town Bristol Facebook page and read some of the horrifying things that I've read over the last week, I was saddened to think that these are my neighbors. When my children, my boys particularly, were seven years old, their black father took them to the Bristol Town Common to play. My children are friendly and engaged with other children. A white father came up, took his white children by the hands, and tore them away from playing, saying, "You're not allowed to play with those black kids," proceeded to call their father the N-word, and told him to get out of town. Two years ago, my son, who plays on the Mont Hope High School football team, was in the middle of a football game and was continually called the N-word by a Barville High School football player. No coach stood up for him to stop it. No referee stood up for him to stop it. At the end of the game, I was the one who took issue with the coach, who told me to mind my business. And last but not least, just seven months ago, my 16-year-old son at the time was driving. He had a white friend in the car who happened to be a girl. I was following him because he was having car problems. He was pulled over because his headlights had gone out. I had him on the phone. I taught him what to do since he'd only been driving for two months. I told him how to pull over. The police officer went up to the car. I was behind the police officer in my own car. I did not get out. I did not interfere. I had the speakerphone going and listened to the police officer question the girl in the car. "How old are you? What are you doing with him? Do your parents know? Where are you from?" I was shocked on the other end of the phone. I remained calm. I didn't say anything. The police officer took the registration and the license and walked back to the vehicle. I politely stuck my head out of the car and said, "I'm his mom. He's having car problems. I've called AAA. I apologize. We were thinking we could make it just a half a mile more, and we couldn't." She turned the documents to my son and left, didn't ask if they could stay and help, didn't apologize for, really, what was an inquiry to the young girl in the car, who was totally shaken by it, as was my son. Those are three of many examples that I have of how my black children have been treated in this town. I am not treated differently because I have the white privilege. The color of my skin is white, and when you see me, I am white. But when people see my children, they don't see that. So I beg you, not only to fly the flag, but to fly it for the rest of the month of June, to show that Bristol is willing to take the first step in what I hope will be many more steps to breaking down the barriers to racism in this town, in this state, and in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Keith Maloney. I'm going to unmute you. If you could state your full name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Keith Maloney. I live at 72 Griswold Ave. here in Bristol.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman and Town Council, for opening this very critical discussion among those of us who call ourselves Bristol residents. As some of you may know, I wrote a letter to the editor in last week's Phoenix. In that letter, I committed myself to stand up to racism wherever I saw it or experienced it. That was not a week ago. In that time, I have had to stand up to three incidents of racial bias. Three incidents in Bristol where people, in a very offhanded and disrespectful way, just diminished the quality of black people in our town. I am horrified that I would have three opportunities in six days. It is a national crisis. This has gone on too long, and the red herring thrown out earlier on these calls about what the Black Lives Matter organization cares, supports, or stands for is just that. It's a red herring. And I just ask one question. Forget about the organization. Forget about it. Doesn't mean anything. Just answer one question. Do Black Lives Matter? Yes or no? I think we should fly the flag every June, not just this June. Not just this June, but every June. I appreciate your consideration of that opportunity. I thank you for the opportunity to present my point of view. And God bless Bristol and God bless America if we can do the right thing finally for the people that built this country on their backs for hundred years. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Bullard is next. Bullard, excuse me. Bill, if you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is William Bullard, twelve ninety-two Hope Street. I apologize for that picture. I didn't realize that was still up. Keith, so say I. Well said. Jane, so say I. I listen to those stories and I am upset. I, I can't believe that this actually happens today. You know, other red herrings that I have seen, the red herring of black-on-black crime, both black-on-black and white-on-white violent crime are both eighty percent or higher. And yet I hear nobody talking about the opposite. These red herrings and what-aboutism are not the point. We have been struggling as a country for four hundred years and we need to do better. We need to succeed. We need to fly that flag. I agree for all of June. You mentioned the flags from Portugal or from Armenia. You know, Portugal and Armenia haven't been struggling for quite as long as the black people of the United States. It needs to fly for more than a day. It needs to fly for the entire month of June. I can't say anything or add anything. It's already been said. We need to fly this flag. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alexandria Di Lorenzo. If you could state your full name and address for the record.
My name is Alexandria Di Lorenzo. So I'm actually, I live in Bristol at four oh three Wood Street, but it's going to be in five days on the fifteenth, my one-year anniversary of living here.
We won't hold that against you. That's okay.
Thank you. Well, so it's funny because I wasn't going to speak because of that. Actually, I was scared to speak since I'm not a real resident yet, but being on this call tonight and hearing all of the beautiful and wonderful voices that are here to support this cause makes me want to be a resident. I want to, I've been saying for a year now that this is my home and I have never had a home. I've never had a real home and that's what it feels like here. I can like hear music outside my street right now and probably hear the Mack truck, but I kind of love it when that happens. And, you know, being a part of Bristol has been such a beautiful thing for me and, you know, when this happened, I was faced with a lot of the things that I have seen myself. Because overall, what Bristol means to me is love, nature, and just everything that I stand for. And there has been instances where I have seen the opposite, but that's not what Bristol is as a whole. And this movement right now, with you guys taking a part in it and flying that flag, it's going to completely sign, seal, and deliver my, my becoming a real Bristol resident. And that's really all that I want. I want to, I want to feel that excitement to have my license say that I'm a Bristol resident by having you guys support this cause. That means so much to me by coming from a blended family and hearing the stories tonight. You know, they touched my heart in so many ways and I just, I thank everybody for, you know, allowing me the time to speak with you and all the council for giving us the space to do this as a community. And I just, I'm so thankful for all the stories and the voices that I heard here tonight and for making me proud to have found somewhere that I finally want to call home. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We've been on for a bit. I see the last person that came on, just came on, so I'm going to go with that, was Mary Ann Bergenholz. So we're going to go through the rest of the people stopping at Mary Ann. She was the last one. We've been on the call for a while. We've heard a lot of comment from the public. We're going to finish with those that are still on the list. And we're going to go next to Mary Kay Wright. If you could please state your full name and address for the record.
Hi. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I'm Mary Kay Wright from one sixty-five Wood Street. And I, I also want to thank you for allowing people to have this conversation tonight, which has been incredibly impressive, calm and articulate. I'm very proud of my community. But the reason I wanted to speak is because I know you said that the petitioners asked for the flag to be flown at the town hall and that it could only be, the solicitor apparently is saying that it can only be done for twenty-four hours there. But I'm just wondering if it would be possible to ask the petitioners if they would be willing to change their request to letting it fly at Independence Park for one month?
Actually, Mary Kay, I'll stop you right there. It's not advertised that way. It's not even a discussion. It's not the way it was put to the public to ask for their input like we're having right now. It would be inappropriate to change anything that was requested. I don't believe the petitioner asked, and I'll look at it again, on a timeline of it, but certainly their request was directly a flag at town hall and that is the only thing that's on the discussion. So I didn't mean to interrupt.
Is there, is there a way out of, I mean, is there another way to get to that point? Because I know that most of us would prefer to have the one month and I think it would be, you know, far more, send a much greater message. Is there any way to?
It's, and again, this is, this is your turn to speak, but I'll answer that question for you very quickly and say that we have open meetings and advertising purposely to make sure, and I hear the underarching theme of your request and I take it the right way. But it is important that we give the public the opportunity to speak on what is being presented. If it was suggested that, for example, twenty flags be up or a hundred flags, for example, that is the way that it would need to be advertised. It's not, and I'm not saying it is, but it would be inappropriate for us to consider another option here without re-advertising it. We could continue it to our next meeting if that was, I'm not asking to do that, but I'm giving you the, the next step if that was going down. So, so what's in front of us this evening is, is only at town hall. Did you want to share anything else, Mary Kay?
No, I, I'd like to, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we can take it further somehow and get to the one month. But I'll wait this and see.
You sure? I don't want to cut you off.
Mr. Chairman?
No, that's okay.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to remind Mary Kay, the motion on the floor is for the month of June.
That's right. That is the motion right now. And if I wasn't clear in explaining that to Mary Kay, well, my point was, it was asked for town hall flag, but I don't believe, and again, I'll verify it, maybe you could do that for me, is that there was no timeline that was requested whatsoever. So that's, that's what we're discussing here. So I want to continue with the public dialogue. Next on there was Steve Katz. So Steve, if you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Steve Katz, forty-two River Street here in Bristol, and I will be brief, brilliant, and be done. So what I want to read to you is something that one of my favorite figures in history stated. He was murdered fifty-two years ago, Senator Robert F. Kennedy. And he said, quote, "It is from the numberless diverse acts of courage and belief that human history is shaped. Each time a man stands up for an ideal or acts to improve the lot of others or strikes out against injustice, he sends forth a tiny ripple of hope and crossing each other from a million different centers of energy and daring. Those ripples build a current that can sweep down the mightiest walls of oppression and resistance." I support this motion and I look forward to seeing the Black Lives Matter, the Black Lives Matter flag flown. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Esther Waltris. I hope I'm saying that correctly. I just unmuted. If you could please state your full name and address for the record. We can't hear you. You are muted at the moment.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you now. We can't hear you.
Um, am I unmuted?
You are now unmuted. We can hear you. We're going to come back to you because there seems to be technical issues there. So I'm going to go to Erin Y. Erin, if you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Erin Yarbo. I live at fifty Clipper Way. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
So I, we have a mixed-race family here in town and we've been here for about nine years. I grew up on Aquinic Island, a much more diverse community. I was very surprised at how many incidents we've had over the years. We had a family member, a niece, who came to stay with us this fall and started school at Mount Hope High School. On her second day, she sat in an auditorium full of kids and heard a group of white kids talking about one of the only black kids in the school saying that they were going to smack the black out of him. To say that, hearing that in our community was horrifying and disgusting, it doesn't even put things into words. A couple of days later, she had another incident where a child in her class had said, the teacher had asked, "Who was sitting here yesterday?" Just, I don't know what it was in reference to, but, and one of the kids in class said, "You know, that brown girl." And she came home and she said to me, "You know, Auntie, I wear glasses. Why couldn't he have said the girl with the glasses? Or the girl with the red jacket? I wear a red jacket to school every day. Why did he have to say the brown girl?" She also worked at Dunkin' Donuts at the top of the road and she had an older gentleman who refused to be served by her. So we have major issues here. So this is not something that I ever expected to be experiencing in 2019. I'm afraid for my children because what are they going to experience? And I love it here. I don't want to have to move because we have such systemic issues in this town. So if we're having a debate over flying a flag, I mean, that's like a no-brainer, right? And I, I mean, I think enough testimony tonight has come to that, but I just want to make sure you guys understand, like, how severe some of these issues are and that these children, they're still being taught this. They're still being taught all these years later. And I had to sit there and tell a sixteen-year-old who was in a brand-new school, who was here for not a very great reason, she was a foster kid, so she had been ripped out of a place that wasn't a good environment, and we thought we were giving her a great chance, right? We're moving her to a better school district and she literally experienced racism in her very first week. And obviously, I've reported this to the school. I've talked to Dr. Bryce about it, which must have been horrifying for him to come into this town. But I sit here on these community boards and on Facebook and I see what people are saying to each other, and if we don't start taking a bigger stand, we are going to let this continue to spread and it's just going to spread and spread. So, you know, unfortunately, I don't have this wonderful story to tell you guys, but it's important that I share what we've experienced in this town because it's not okay. I've run into issues with other people, you know, who I'm no longer friends with because they were sharing, you know, political memes, but of a former president as a monkey. That's not okay. I don't care if you don't like the guy. It's not okay. And so I think, yes, obviously, the flag is what's in front of us and the fact that we're even discussing why, why everybody feels like they need to make a stand because so many people were up in arms about it on the Facebook page. I mean, gosh, we need to do way more than this. So I hope my story helps open your eyes to what's actually happening because it's got to stop. Because I don't want to move. I love it here. I want my kids to stay here, but I'm not going to stay here if it's going to continue to be like this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Esther. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
We can. If you could please state your full name and address for the record.
My name is Esther Waltris. I'm not currently a resident, but I grew up in the Bristol Warren School system.
Could you state your address anyway?
Eleven South Grove Avenue in Warren.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that I support the raising of the Black Lives Matter flag and I'd like to add a statistic to the forum. So according to the FBI's Uniform Crime Reporting Data for 2016, ninety-point-one percent of black victims of homicide were killed by other black people, while eighty-three-point-five percent of white victims were killed by other white people. Black-on-black crime is just as common as white-on-white crime because similarity, the vast majority of white murders are committed by white people. This is because most victims of crime personally know their perpetrator. Police brutality is about police murdering innocent and unarmed black people and black children. General crime is a distraction from the real issue at hand. I support raising the Black Lives Matter flag to respect the lives of black people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have two left. It'll be Mary Ann and I would imagine that is Steve Bridgity. So Mary Ann Bergenholz, please state your full name and address for the record.
Mary Ann Bergenholz, three sixty-six Hope Street.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing us to speak. I know that you don't have to do that and I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
Of course.
I think most, I think most people in Bristol believe that they are not racist and I have thought that way about myself my whole life. I think that it is not enough to not be racist. We all have to become anti-racist and speak up. And I am hoping that the town council will show through their leadership, that they will show people the way, that this is how we have to go. And I hope that you will approve raising the flag for the month of June. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, it's listed here as S. Bridgity. If you could state your full name and address for the record, please. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me, Nathan?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I have Stephen Bridgity, ninety-three Highland Road here in Bristol.
Thank you.
I'm really disheartened to hear some of the stories of these racist expressions. I'm shocked and taken aback. The reason for my speaking is that I fully support this resolution. And similar to my good friend Mary Kay Wright, I was going to suggest, you know, an additional flag, and I understand that that's something that can be, you know, taken this evening for discussion, but I think it's imperative that we, as a town, as a community, make a statement that we support our brothers and sisters of color by flying this flag proudly, be it for the month of June or an annual thing that happens that can be determined. But I fully, fully support this and after, especially after hearing some of the stories that were expressed tonight, I think it's more important than ever that we, we as a community, represented by all of you council members, and I thank you for your service, that you will, I urge you to vote in favor of flying this flag. Thank you, Nathan. Thank you all members of the council for hearing me.
Thank you. All right, so I said there was only two left. I'm actually, there is two left, including someone who I think we started with, that number is nine seven four seven one seven four eight five four seven. It's too many digits. I'm going to unmute you. Please state your, I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. If you could state your full name and address for the record. Hello?
Nathan, I'm not sure if you're talking to me. I'm not that number. This is Pete Hewitt. I've had my hand raised at the beginning. This is Pete Hewitt, I've been, I've had my hand raised at the beginning.
So, uh, Pete, if you could please state your name, your full name and address for the record, you show up on, on here as a telephone number or something like that.
I'm sorry, I don't know how that happened. Yeah, my name is Hewitt. And, uh, I live at eleven Wendy Drive. And I've heard all of the comments tonight. And I've heard the comments from the town council, and I'm going to presume that the vote of the council is going to be to raise the flag over town hall. And I think that's a mistake. I am opposed to raising the flag for several reasons. One, uh, I'm questioning whether or not raising a flag of a political movement or a political organization on town property is lawful or unlawful, and I would ask the town solicitor, or perhaps chairman, if you would ask the town solicitor to look into that issue in terms of whether it is or not a lawful action by the town council. Two, the BLM, the Black Lives Movement can be perceived as a phrase, Black Lives Matter, no reasonable human being would ever disagree that black lives do matter. As do blue lives matter, as do all lives matter. If a flag over town hall is considered lawful, I would much prefer to have an ALM, All Lives Matter flown over the town hall, over Independence Park or wherever. Because if the promoters of the BLM flag flying movement are concerned about bringing unity and diversity and inclusion to the issue of race, I think they would be much better suited and much better postured to enhance that issue and that goal by, by talking about and speaking about All Lives Matter. If it's a, because I think the Black Lives Movement or the Black, Black, Black Lives Matter Movement is in fact a movement or an organization. I think it is closely aligned, my personal opinion. It is closely aligned with the Antifa movement, which is not exactly pro unity. Uh, I think I, Mr. Filippi indicated that there's nothing anti-police about the BLM, however, I do recall movements and protests and demonstrations where the expression was something like frying cops like bacon, that doesn't sound like it's pro police. Um, I think the problem for the town council will be if they exceed to the wishes of the petitioners to fly a BLM flag, whether it's perhaps because if it's a phrase that we can all agree with, or a movement which I don't agree with. Um, you guys at the town council perhaps maybe opening up a Pandora's box because one of the guidelines or the protocols for adopting a resolution to fly any sort of a flag over town hall. Might ISIS coming along tomorrow and ask that, uh, that the town council of Bristol fly an ISIS flag over town hall? And what are your grounds for denying that request? Um, I, 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 in my own judgment, I think the requests made by the petitioners, and there are obviously every one of them except for Mike Burns, is in favor, which is a, a concern of mine. Um, I think it's unnecessary to fly the BLM flag because, again, if it's a BLM movement, uh, doesn't deserve to be flown. If it's simply a phrase for which the promoters would like to have the town adopt the belief and the feeling that black lives matter, I think that's kind of a common sense, everybody would agree to that, there's no issue with regards to that. I think racism and racists do exist in the country. By the way, slavery really has not been in the country for four hundred years because the country itself has only been around for about two hundred and whatever, late seventeen hundreds, so let's not go back to sixteen twenty on our, on our slavery issue. Um, I think it's unnecessary, I think it's inappropriate to fly the BLM flag because of the connotation. I think the town council, the town of Bristol would either implicitly or explicitly be adopting and agreeing to promote the Black Lives Movement agenda as a movement, as an organization, for which I do not agree at all. Nor do most police officers who have been victimized by the BLM and the Antifa movement. And I just think the town council needs to look at this as a matter of what's right, what's wrong, not emotionally, but factually, and I think if you do and you have the courage of your convictions, you should be voting no on this motion, thank you.
Thank you. So Elaine, I said I was gonna stop with you, so I'm gonna go to Elaine White, if you could please, uh, state your full name and address for the record. Let's try that again. Go ahead, Elaine.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Nathan, for allowing me to speak. I listened to Pete, I listened to Mike, I'm-
Elaine, I'm sorry to stop you, could you please state your full name and address for the record?
Elaine White, eleven Constitution Street, Bristol. And I'm so proud of our town for, uh, coming out to speak in favor of this flag. This is, um, this unfortunately for us, we cannot say this is a them versus we, and that's what I hear from Pete and Mike, and that is troublesome to me. Uh, I think we need to think in terms of where we are at, at this moment. And we have to make a decision on how we want our town to show alignment with Black Lives Matter. And to fly the flag says that we are thinking in terms of the future of our town, the way we show up, the way our community comes together as a group, as a unified group, I listened to what Erin said, and I've heard those stories from Erin before, and those stories happen. And when Pete and Mike speak, though I understand sometimes their philosophies, because I've had many dialogues with them uh, in the past, I think that they sometimes sound like they're from the fifties. And I think we are in two thousand twenty, and we have to start thinking in the future of how we represent our town. And to not fly the flag is an embarrassing experience for the way our community comes together. We have a sordid history to our town, and I think it's time for us to take a stand and make us feel like we are part of something much larger. So, I'm gonna dig my heels in, I'm gonna buy a flag myself, I'm gonna hang it on the front of my house. And I think that anyone who is, uh, thinking about this flag positively, and we need to all buy a flag and put it up in, um, solidarity with this experience that black lives have been going through for hundreds of years. And we get to walk out of our houses every day as white people and not have to deal with the layers upon layers of prejudice that go on amongst every single black person that has to deal with this. We don't know because we're not in those situations. And I love what somebody said about, this is not a, a police issue for our town. And, and I think the experience has not been so divisive with our police force, but I don't know because I'm not black. I think there are so many things that we can do as a community to take a stand here, and I really appreciate the time, thank you so much, Nathan, and the town council.
Thank you. Okay, I said I was gonna stop with Elaine, um, we had more and then less and more, and I, we, I needed to do a cutoff here. Thank you all for the time that you've taken, uh, sharing your thoughts with the town council. Um, so I'm gonna ask my colleagues, we had a motion and a second um, to, uh, fly the flag, and it was, the motion was to fly the flag uh, for the month of June, and I'd like to open it back up, hearing all the discussion we've had, uh, back up to my colleagues for, uh, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Aaron Lay here, um, I think that the comments that were made by a lot of the residents of Bristol here just kind of reinforce my point that, um, I support this, I think that uh, this is far different than anything else, this is an exceptional time in history. This is a time of history that has entered the national consciousness and requires us to stare deep into our own souls. And it's time for us to, uh, move forward and support this and to, uh, and that's why I'll be voting for, um, to, um, fly the Black Lives Matter flag for the rest of the month, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, Tim here, I just, you thank all the residents for coming out and talking about the Black Lives Matter flag, I am so proud of all of you standing up. Um, I think by flying the flag, say we're a compassionate community. And we're an open community, and we are standing up for racial injustice. And, uh, that's why I'm so proud that, uh, motion's on the floor to fly it for one month. And we're going to take the step forward, as Steve Katz said, uh, that ripple of hope is going to get sent, be sent out to all the other neighboring states and cities around, you know, in the United States throughout the world. So, um, very proud of all you guys, thank you.
Yeah, could I just make a, a quick comment, and that is, I think people did a fantastic job to be able to discuss this rationally and to share experiences, and that's the kind of thing that we need more of out there in the community, our community and across the board, so thank you all very, very much. And thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, for letting everyone speak, um, as well throughout this.
Of course. Tony? We can hear you, looks like you wanna say something.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, no, I certainly concur with, uh, Mary's statement, uh, you know, thank you to everyone and especially being so respectful and expressing their opinions and being very articulate about this matter. Um, so, uh, with that being said, I just wanna clarify a point, uh, uh, the vice chair stated that one month, are we talking about one month or the remainder of the month of June?
Uh,
The motion was the remainder of the month of June.
The month of June, correct, Chairman.
I, I certainly have some over concern for us to do that for the remainder of the month. Uh, as it was pointed out from one of the speakers at the very beginning, uh, will he be here next with a petition for, to raise a flag of some sorts? Uh, I have some concern about that, which is, uh, to your point initially is that we need to address this and have some sort of a policy going forward.
Um, I, I'm gonna stop and say, Mary, I think you captured it quite well, I'm also very thankful to all of the speakers, both for and against, for sharing their thoughts i- in a respectful way. Uh, it's exactly what we asked for, it's exactly what we expected, and it's exactly what we got. Thank you, thank you all, uh, I wasn't expecting anything different, neither were my colleagues. Um, for myself, I think that, that I, I hear the motion, I think we should make sure that obviously the, the flag is being, if, if the, the council wants to go this direction, the flag would be, uh, a three by five or, or similar smaller size, three by five would, is a very standard sized. Dropped off, I would, I would imagine with the town clerk, if this council believes this is the right direction, I'm not trying to get to an eventual end here. Um, I do think the, the, in regards to the timeline, I think we should just take a moment, I don't wanna negotiate four days and six days, it's not my intention with this, but this council is very much about, uh, protocols and precedent. Um, we do protocols just as we did, we handled this meeting. Um, we listen to the public, we don't have to, but we listen to those, the, to the public as we should. Um, and there are systems in place and there's reasons why we start and stop and we let each other speak. Those are protocols and, and I believe that the flag, um, in the hundred years that we've been doing this, I don't know that to be a fact, but a very, very long time that we've been flying flags other than town, state and United States flag, it's always been twenty-four hours, so if we're going to make an exception, may I suggest that it have um, a justification for it, maybe a week as opposed to, again, I'm not looking to negotiate, this is not what that's, my, my point is about, but I don't think we throw our protocols out the window. Um, and I do not believe it lessens all of what was said this evening by changing a timeline from the initial proposal. I look to you, Mr. Vice Chair, cause it was your motion that was made. Um, I think we need to be respectful of all of the years and the ways that we've handled sovereign nations' flags. Um, we've never done this before, and it would seem appropriate to me that, um, we shorten that timeline, and I don't believe that lessens our, uh, respect for this or our, uh, your commitment, your, your motion, so I don't believe it changed at all, I would ask maybe the whole, uh, next week, starting on Monday and ending on Friday, um, it seems like it would be more of a timeline on it. Why, I don't know, I just, I feel like if we go too long, then we will have other requests and we have no protocols to say where we start and stop. I think what we should do is keep this tight, but still be respectful, and I don't think it gives anything at all uh, away from what your initial motion was. So I would ask that if, if you would consider maybe all of next week or last week of the month, whatever you believe is, is a more, uh, appropriate way of doing it. Um, but I believe that that's a long time from, we've never done that before for neighboring nations, nations that, that, and countries. So, what's your thoughts on that, Tim?
Um, my thoughts-
Again, I'm not looking to negotiate, that's not my intention, I don't want you to take it that way, so.
I, I, I think we've heard from our community tonight that they're clear that this is a, you know, this would send a ripple hope, it would, it would send that we're a compassionate community and that we, they, they want this flag, and I, I think it, it has, it sends-
Agreed.
Sends a huge message to, um, everybody around us, uh, that we're an open and compassionate community. Um, they, we're looking at it, it's already June tenth, by the time we get the flag goes up, it's probably gonna be two weeks, two weeks and two days for it to be up, so-
Okay.
If you're thinking it's by Friday, it's not, you know, I don't think an unreasonable amount of time, and I also, um, I, it's, it means a lot to our community, I think we should, we should take the step forward.
So, um, for myself, I mentioned in the beginning, and I'll say it again, is that I am not, um, signing on to wholesale all of the things that Black Lives Matters represents. I brought to, uh, my colleagues' attention the defunding the police department, I could not be more against that. Um, but I do believe the petitioner said that that was not their intention by asking, in fact, I know they said that. It is, I want it on the record as saying that I do not support that in any way, shape or form. Um, but I do support the thoughts and the feelings that were shared this, this evening by so many. Um, and for that, um, that's where I can find, uh, support for this. So, we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? So before, so Tim, I'd like to clarify it that, that it'll be through the, uh, month of June, once we receive it from the petitioner, um, and I mentioned some flag sizes and it made sense, it should be dropped off to the town clerk. Um, once received, we'll put it up the next day and through the end of June, so it should get it to us right away if this is where the council would like to go. Um, and that, also, if you would in, include it in your motion that we take next steps in a clear policy, even-handed, fair policy in regards to flag raisings in the town, are you amenable to that?
Amenable to that, thank you, Mr.-
So I hear that as an amended motion, Tony, would you second that? You, you, it was your second, correct? Oh, I'm so sorry, Erin, you seconded it, I- Are you comfortable with that as a second? Perfect, alright. So we have a motion and a second, with all that was discussed, I don't think we need to go through it again? Is there any other discussion? Tim?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
I also say aye with the, uh, the concerns that I expressed, but I do say aye. Thank you, motion passes. So, uh, I'm gonna just ask you to take just a moment. Uh, the clerk is right here as he normally would, so I'm gonna give him a little bit of screen time so he can read our next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, the next item is item F two, and this concerns the petition of JML Excavation requesting reimbursement pursuant to the town code for sewer lateral installations, you have recommendation provided by the Director of Community Development and the Water Pollution Control Superintendent.
So I would ask, let me turn the screen back to me, thank you. Um, Mr. Administrator, I'm gonna, I guess I would, I'm, I'm asking you, and you can certainly direct me probably to Diane, the Director of Community Development. I'd just like to have just a quick overview of what is being requested and why it's appropriate, it's certainly appropriate in my opinion, but I'd like to have the public understand what's being requested, so.
I, sure, I, I can give a, a brief explanation. So, uh, in this case, uh, there's an expansion of San Francisco Avenue on Metacrum Avenue by a developer, uh, John Lannan, JML Excavation. Uh, and by town ordinance, uh, when there's an expansion of a sewer main, the existing, uh, residents on that street that still have cesspools uh, would be allowed to tie into the main. Uh, and the developer in return would be reimbursed, uh, twenty, two thousand six hundred seventy dollars. So that's on the books, it's in ordinance, and he's requesting the money, it's seven homes that are on cesspool now. The new, the new, uh, main is being installed by the developer, he's asking for a, uh, uh, the, uh, reimbursement of two thousand- He's asking for a, the reimbursement of $2,670. That is a, the cost from the early 1980s, so has not changed since then. There's a recommendation, I believe, from Diane Williamson, myself, to approve the reimbursement.
Thank you. So, I just, if we could, Mr. Solicitor, this particular ordinance, and I agree with the administrator, is, was on the books from the early 80s and it had to, and my understanding was the verbiage on it was to repay the bond for all the sewer work that was happening in the early 80s. I believe that this request is absolutely appropriate and I believe it's probably appropriate to leave something like this in our books moving forward, but I'd ask that if you could take a look at that ordinance and maybe we can bring it up to 2020 standards and have it not revert back to a bond repayment, such and so forth, if my memory is correct. And Diane, please, please jump in, Diane Williamson, if you would. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is my, so, we will definitely do that, but I do agree that under the circumstances, this developer is entitled, because other people are jumping on to a system that he paid for.
Yeah, and absolutely no disagreement on that one. I just want to make sure that that ordinance is reflected in today's words and not, not on a bond repayment from a while ago, so.
We'll take care of it.
Diane, thank you, thank you. One second, Mary. Diane, did you-
Hi, thank you, I'm Diane Williamson. I think everybody has sort of captured this proposal, Steve explained it well, and I think they're confirmed that this is something that this developer is eligible to ask for and receive. I did review this with the Director of the Water Pollution Control Facility as well and we co-authored the memo with our recommendation that you have.
Thank you. Mary?
I was just going to make a motion to approve.
Well, that's very forthcoming, excellent, is there a second?
One second.
Mary made the motion to approve, Tony seconded, is there any discussion?
I just, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify on the reimbursement amount that we are giving, so it's a seven installations, is that the $18,690, would we be reimbursing that much?
Can I, can I weigh in on that answer?
No, I'm kidding, Diane.
The ordinance, and the solicitor can correct me, but the ordinance allows the town to collect a 10% administrative cost from that, so the sewer assessments that are paid to the town, we reimburse the developer less a 10% administrative cost. So, that's, I indicated that in my memo too.
So, Diane, could you then speak to Tim's direct question and what is the actual reimbursed amount?
Yes, so, I did this calculation while I was waiting, let's see, it looks like it's Let me just do this again real quick. $16,821 is my calculation with the 10% that the town would keep for the administrative costs of collecting and then reimbursing the developer that much.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so we had a motion from Mary to approve, and I'm sorry, my notes are poor here, who seconded it, I apologize? And Tony seconded, thank you. And just to be clear, I am for this, if it didn't sound like I was, I just wanted to kind of bring this up to date, that's all. So, motion and a second. Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also say aye, motion carries, thank you.
Yeah, the next item is item I-1, and this is correspondence from the Community Development Black Grant Coordinator regarding the annual application.
Hello there, so, in front of you, you have our proposed application for the CDBG fiscal year 19. We have four projects that we're going to be submitting for under the competitive application cycle. We have a planning activity, public infrastructure, public service, and then there is something that we are doing for East Bay Community Action Program as well. So, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it's approximately 1.2 million.
We do, Chris, in the breakdown, we can, it's exactly what you shared there, there's some work projects for Byfield School improvements, Town of Bristol Senior Center feasibility study, Town of Bristol Summer Camp, and then, as you mentioned, EB cap on 215 Wood Street renovation. So, and Chris, could you remind us, is that if we go forward with this application, when do we typically find out? I know last year, I want to say, was a little bit slow in the response time, but generally speaking, when do we hear back?
So, typically, this application is due April 30th, but with everything that's going on, they push back the application deadline to the end of June. I expect they're going to play a little bit of catch-up and try to get us an answer in the early fall.
Chris, could you also remind everyone, the last year's round, what did we apply for and what did we find success with?
So, last year, we had put in funding requests for a few home repair products. In addition, we got, I would call it, the first round of funding for the Byfield Elevator, so that was approximately $250,000. It's allowed us to go out and begin conversations with a consultant engineer and architecture service. We have done some preliminary work on that project, but it was determined that additional funding would be needed to put a full elevator in Byfield. So, this is that additional funding that you see in front of you. Last year, we also got funding for Phase 2 of our Wood Street Neighborhood Streetscape improvements, so that was approximately $450,000. And that was to redo the sidewalks over on Shaw's Rock, Ryan, Easterbrook and Murphy's, so really just trying to get those streets completed. And we're very pleased because we've been able to work with National Grid and Bristol County Water going there and do it all at the same time. So, I've talked to some of those residents and they're going to be very happy.
I feel like that was the 30-second commercial for, sometimes we give for business, well, that was a 30-second commercial for some success there, nice job. Mary?
Is that, I just had a question for Chris, if I may, Chris, excuse me?
Mary, just one second, I'm sorry, I know I called, Tony made the motion to approve, do you mind if you could second it and I'll open it up?
Oh, I can second, yeah, that's fine.
All right, so go ahead.
I heard you mention, I don't know if you misspoke or if it was, if it is, you said 2019, is this the application for 20 or 21?
So-
Or 19?
Yeah, yeah, so for CDBG, they actually are a year behind in their grant application. So, even though we're in 2020, by the time that they go through all the regulatory requirements from the federal level, we apply for last year's program year funding, so it's program year 19 that we're under.
Okay, thank you.
So, we had a motion to approve this resolution by Tony, seconded by Mary, is there any other discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
I also say aye, motion carries, thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item J1, which is bid number 930, and this is for the Bristol Golf Course Water Quality Improvements Project. We have five bids submitted, the first is from Weed and Feed DHT Golf Services of Plymouth, Massachusetts, in the amount of $497,125. The second is Skirker Construction of West Warwick Rhode Island, in the amount of $576,000 even. The next is for US Pitch Care LLC of Northford, Connecticut, in the amount of $284,350. The fourth is from RAD Corp. of Rockland, Massachusetts, in the amount of $420,458. And the last is from SomeCo Echo Contracting LLC of Peabody, Massachusetts, in the amount of $428,600.
What's this council's pleasure?
Chairman, this is Tim, make a motion to refer to the administrator, God bless you, to act in, to have him act in the best interest of the town.
Tony seconded.
So, I heard a motion from Tim, seconded by Mary, should be to Tony, to act in the, sorry, refer to the administrator, act as in the best interests of the town, is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carries, thank you. Getting dizzy?
I am, a little bit.
The next item is item K1, and this is the monthly report provided by Alan Klepper, the Barrington Director of the Bristol County Water Authority.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Tim seconded.
Tony made the motion to receive and file, Tim seconded, is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also say aye, motion carries.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item L1, and this is from Solicitor regarding insurance premium payment at Bristol Industrial Park.
Mr. Solicitor.
As you all know, the Bristol Industrial Park or the Mosaic property on Wood Street is in receivership. The receiver has sold the property and there will be a closing. As you recall, at your last meeting, you all authorized and approved a zone change, which was one of the conditions for the closing to take place. There are two additional conditions that need to be met, the major one being the complete remediation of the environmental issues there. That is in progress, but it is still not complete. The insurance on the premises ran out on May 31st, and there's a need for an additional three months of insurance for June, July and August. I'm told by the receiver, the closing is going to take place. If not within the next 30 days, certainly won't go beyond 90, let's hope. The additional insurance premium to cover those three months is $4,887. The two creditors are Bristol Funding, that is Richard Fain and the Town of Bristol. So, what we've been doing is splitting the cost of the insurance premiums between the two entities, then when the closing takes place, both entities will be reimbursed the money that you've put out. So, this evening, I'm asking the council to approve an expenditure of $2,443.52, which is one half of that insurance premium, to get the property covered for the next three months, which will be reimbursed at the time of the sale.
What's this council's pleasure?
I move that we approve the expenditure and hopefully that this will be the last time we have to do this, but we're getting closer.
A lot closer, yes.
Tony seconded.
Mary made the motion to approve the expenditure of approximately 2443 and change, I believe. Tony seconded it, is there any discussion? Tim?
I echo Mary's sentiment, hopefully we're getting closer and closer, but aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
I also say aye, I don't say hi, I say aye, motion carries, thank you.
The next, the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
I shall be brief, we've been here a while and we've had a lot of conversation. My conversation will be about two things, one of, actually, both of them came up a little bit earlier. Richard Gene George, I thought it was appropriate and interesting, appropriate to bring him up and interesting that it's happened at all this time, he passed away approximately five years ago, it's been a few days. And it reminds me of a story of my kids, Richard Gene George used to be one of the officers at Colt Andrews, and my kids would look forward to seeing him in front of the school. And it reminds me, and it honestly, it heartens me, because we've had this experience as a family, of my kids don't see color. My kids didn't see him as a black man or a white man, they saw him as a police officer. And quite honestly, they saw him as a wonderful person, that's what they saw first. I just wanted to remember him. I knew him kind of well, but through his brothers and sisters at the police department, I got to know him better after he passed away, which is unfortunate. But I just wanted to remember him. I also wanted to talk about our police department just for a moment. I know this council and this town and said many, many times on the call that we very much support them, and for myself, I very much do. I have an immense amount of respect for our police department, I have friends there, I have friends in other police departments that are local, semi-local, on a state level, and the immense amount of difficulties that they see on a day-to-day basis, what the challenges that they deal with. And I truly say thank you to them. This discussion this evening was done respectfully and I thank all the participants for doing that, but I just, I found it important that we call out the wonderful job that our police department does, and I'll take a second on that. We are Kalia certified, which is a national accreditation. That is not a sticker that goes on the side of the car, it's not a piece of paper that gets stuck in a drawer someplace. It's protocols, it's processes, and it's reporting to make sure that those things are done correctly. They include and are not limited to racial profiling, how not to do it, right? Use of force, a safe way to take someone into custody. These are things that we have done, these things, we're lucky to have a police department like this? No. Luck is where opportunity meets preparedness, and from what we have right now, from past chiefs like Josh Canario, intern chiefs like Chief Peters and Brian Burke, Captain Burke, and now Chief Lynch, and the men and women of the police department, this community says thank you to you. I'm so proud of what you do, the feedback I get from the public, and money will justify that, is just outstanding. No one is perfect, but that in no way is supposed to tarnish at all my pride for you. Thank you, thank you, everyone.
The swing.
Thank you, Councilman Chairman Cloro. On Saturday, I walked with my sister, who is African-American, for Black Lives Matter, and I want to echo that the police department did an amazing job of making everyone feel safe and welcome, and it just goes to say that we're a class act and we do, we basically do community policing and we are accepting. My sister, who has grown up in Bristol, she's not always felt, always has welcomed, but she felt walking with me on the parade route, it was her step forward as a change for us. So, that's why I'm so proud of this council and proud of the administration for voting to put the Black Lives Matter flag down for the remainder of the month, because it does send that message that we want change and we're not going to tolerate business as usual, and we're moving forward. That hope, that hope, that that little black girl, that little black boy standing up, looking at that flag, it's going to say, this is a place where I can live and feel safe and welcome. So, anyway, that's it, have a great night, be kind to one another.
Mr. Texira?
It's interesting that our chair addressed the police department, because I was going to make similar points, but he's already done that, so it's very much appreciated. But to the point, when people have questioned policies and procedures of our department, I think we stand pretty firm after being re-accredited nationally and also statewide. So, with that being said, you know, it should put an ease some of the folks that are questioning the policies. The other piece is, let's not forget, this weekend is Flag Day, let's not forget to put our American flag, that stands for freedom, for freedom of all. So, let's not forget to step up and make sure that we hang those flags with pride for all. So, thank you.
Ms. Pirella?
Thank you. A couple of my things have already been talked about, but I'll just reiterate them briefly, and that is, I was downtown at Independence, by Independence Park on Saturday, and the demonstration, everybody was very, 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 very professional, very well behaved, it was very peaceful, I know that there was a lot of concern about that, and that was what I think some of the references were made this evening about around town Bristol and Facebook and so forth. The amount of, the amount of police we had down there, from the state police to our local police to the neighboring, neighboring communities, I think they did a fantastic job, making sure that they were prepared for anything, I think is the case. I mean, they make sure that everybody was safe, I think they were professional and polite, and I think that much of, I sent Steve a text about this, much of what I've seen over the years has been, you know, the real professionalization of the department and of policing in general. I mean, you know, not just of our department, but in general, and with the national certification. And I wanted to mention all the people that Nathan spoke about, but I also think, Steve, if I remember correctly- if I remember correctly, weren't you one of the people that originally maybe worked on the national accreditation back when you were deputy chief? And I think that that is something that, you know, we owe a great debt of gratitude to you and to Josh, who really moved us forward, I think we were probably, I'm not sure if I remember this correctly, but I think we were probably one of the first departments in Rhode Island to be nationally accredited, and so I want to extend a thanks to you as well, and also of your managing and handling all of this with the police department and to Chief Lynch, for the work that you all did on Saturday. So I think that that is a terrific, it was, it was a great representation of what we're about, and I can't help but think that, or wonder, I just wonder about this, you know, is, where, where we have some of these major issues, are those nationally accredited departments? And I just think it'd be interesting, like, you know, if I had some time to do that research, just to check that out. Because people do say that they, we need some national standards and so forth, but I think we have that through the accreditation process. I did also want to mention Flag Day, and also Fireman Sunday, and thank our first responders. Usually there is a parade and another celebration, but because of COVID-19, we're not able to do all the things that we would normally do. But I do want to, you know, thank all of our firefighters and first responders, and to remember those who passed away this past year, who served us for so many years. Thank you.
Mr. Lay?
I have to unmute myself there. I just want to echo what a lot of, what my colleagues had said about, I had an opportunity as well to march in the parade, or not the parade, actually, the, the march, to Independence Park, and it was absolutely incredible, the amount of solidarity that I experienced at a, at a march like that, and we took a knee for eight minutes and, what was it, 40 seconds? And it is absolutely incredible how long it felt to be doing something like that, and the silence that you could hear was, had just kind of taken our, my breath away, at least, and it was kind of a powerful moment for me, and, and I say that because when I think about raising a flag like Black Lives Matter, I don't see this as some sort of zero-sum game, where if you're raising a flag, that necessarily means that it's the loss to a police department or something like that. This is, this is something a lot bigger than that, that's, this is something that really gets to the root of some of the challenges that we face as a society, and some of the difficult conversations that we have to have moving forward. And so I look forward to having those conversations, these are conversations that I have at my work now, all the time, like, this is something that was going to be embedded in our institutions at the university that I work with, and so, so I don't think that this is going to be going away anytime soon. I'm going to shift gears real quick, I went to Providence today, I was very happy to see that they have the Newport Ferry signs up, and then right below the Newport Ferry signs, it explained that there are stops in Bristol, it was just really nice for me to see that, and for all of us, I think, to see that the name of Bristol is associated with that Newport Ferry, and so thanks to RIDOT, and anybody in, in the town administration who was involved in, in helping to get the word out about that. So with that being said, thanks to everybody for listening, and what a wonderful night, thank you.
Town Administrator Agenda Items.
Just like to give you an update on some local projects, Independence Park, the boardwalk was repaired, the Prudence Island Dock is open for public parking, daily public parking. Hopefully that's useful for our dine-out zones, which are, I'm here at Town Hall now, and look like the restaurants were fairly busy tonight, so I think the dine-out zones are working. Good news on the pump, the fuel pumps at the State Street Dock, the CRMC hearing we heard yesterday is going to be on the 23rd of June. We're waiting to see the full agenda of the meeting, but we got official word that we're up for a hearing on the 23rd of June for the fuel pumps, so that's good news. Our summer camp registrations are going well for July, one month of summer camp, the beach should be open this weekend. We're working with Fourth of July Committee to hopefully kick off some type of a celebration on the Fourth of July, on the parade route, stay tuned, you should be hearing an announcement officially from the Fourth of July Committee, but our department heads have been working with the Executive Board of the Fourth of July Committee, so that, that's good news there. And lastly, I'd just like to say thank you to Chief Lynch, I know you're still on, your command staff, and Police Department, neighboring police departments, for the job well done, and I want to thank you, and I want to thank you as a resident, and as a parent, our police department does a superb job, and I for one, support the efforts of the department, and for the most part, the hundreds of thousands of law enforcement officers in this country, and their families that support them every day and at night. And I grieve with them, along with the families of those who may have been unjustly killed. Hopefully we'll be able to build better relations and further professionalize our policing. But I just want to say that I am in full support of our police department, and also those that may feel marginalized, so we have to keep open minds, I know our police department does, they've worked with other, other departments, where there are various races, and they've always worked, worked well with them, so I'm very proud of our department, I just want to really reiterate that. That's all I have, happy Flag Day on Sunday, hopefully we'll see you, and be well, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, I just need a motion to adjourn.
A move.
So we had a motion from Tony, seconded by Tim, we do not need to do a roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone, thank you very much.
Thank you for everything, thank you, have a good night.